Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Bernhardt.
Here.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez and Mayor Protem Alcorano are absent for the record.
Would everybody please stand for the questions. Ready to begin.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Murray to join me again.
I'll do.
Mr. Murray, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Uh, yes, ma- madam mayor, uh, we ask that you table item C one. Other than that, there are no, uh, suggested adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you. This is Turner. Do we have any reportable actions from closed session?
Yes, the council did discuss one item in closed session, which was public employee performance evaluation of the position of city manager. Direction was given and no reportable action at this time. That completes my report.
Yeah, and now we'll move on to public comment. Public comment, if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor at that time. State your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing for the meeting. Do we have anybody here for a public comment tonight? Seeing none. Madam clerk, did we receive any via email?
No, we didn't.
Then we'll move on to a special presentations. Item A one, proclamation declaring the month of September a suicide prevention awareness month for the city of Imperial. And with that, we have a proclamation. Um, whereas on September eighth, two thousand twenty-three, President Biden declared September tenth, two thousand twenty-three as World Suicide Prevention Day. And whereas we hold all those affected by suicide close in our hearts, the Americans we have lost to this public health problem, the ones who mourn their heart-wrenching losses, and all of the families and professionals working to support those in crisis. And whereas in two thousand twenty-one, more than forty-eight thousand Americans were lost to suicide. Over twelve point three million adored seriously considered suicide and one point seven million people attempted suicide. And whereas suicide is the second leading cost of death among young and young, or, uh, among youth and young adults between the ages of ten and twenty-four years old. And whereas the rate for suicide for the suicide rate for veterans was more than fifty percent greater than for non-veteran adults. Yet despite the fact that so many Americans struggle with mental health, treatment is often too expensive or inaccessible. And whereas we recognize there is no single cause of solution to suicide, we know that access to support and treatment can save lives. And whereas suicide prevention is everyone's responsibility, and there are many things we can do to help to prevent suicide, such as talking to our loved ones about suicide, being supportive and understanding and encouraging them to seek help if they're struggling. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Imperial does resolve and determine its order. I, Mayor Catherine Bernhardt, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand three a suicide prevention and awareness month and call upon citizens, communities, organizations, and levels of government to join me in creating hope through action and committing to preventing suicide across our community. I believe we have Scott Dudley here from Imperial County Behavioral Health.
Hang on. Well, it looks like it's on now. It's turning red. Perfect. Council members, members of the audience and members of the public, uh, I, I'm here and honored to be here to salute the city of Imperial for recognizing this. Shame and stigma is one of the things that keeps, uh, suicide as a problem. And s- and and really what we're striving for in our community and through behavioral health and through your actions as public servants is zero. We don't want any suicides in our community. And it's difficult because suicide is the result of something pretty simple. It is unbearable pain and unbearable, uh, loss. And when those conditions are met, a person may be at risk of having thoughts of suicide. We live in a society where unbearable pain and unbearable loss have been determined to be, uh, unacceptable or unusual or wrong. Yet as we think in ourselves and we think of our lives, we all have moments of unbearable pain and loss. That's why it's so important to stand up together, uh, as a community, as a family, as a spiritual community in churches, uh, as school communities, to create conditions where we eliminate unnecessary loss and unnecessary hurt, but also to create conditions where we can pay attention to each other in meaningful ways that connect. And so we can see when somebody's going through this loss and pain and we can support them. At Imperial County Behavioral Health, we offer a number of different answers or solutions to this. We have been offering and we continue to offer to the public, uh, evidence-based suicide intervention trainings. Applied suicide intervention skills training assist is a two-day training that is open to the public. Uh, it's open to other city employees. It's open to, um, obviously law enforcement. We've had members of, uh, Imperial County Fire, uh, out at that, at our trainings. We've had other county agencies out there. And with the goal of, of training more people, because there's evidence based that the more people we have trained in how to detect and how to keep a person safe when they're going through a crisis of having thoughts of suicide, um, the more, the less suicides we have in our community. Uh, we've also expanded our, our helping in terms of having a, a place like Casa Serena where people can go to, to be not only be assessed and be supported, but to relax, to feel peace, to feel, uh, a sense of, of getting themselves back together and grounded again, instead of maybe having to go to crisis services. We have twenty-four seven crisis services. My phone is on right now because I'm on, I'm on call for that one, um, this week. Um, and so we have those services. We are developing our mobile services for crisis response. So that when there are nine-one-one calls coming from your community, we might be able to respond to those calls on a pretty consistent basis when we understand that they're mental health related. That can allow your law enforcement to, um, not have to commit as many staff to mental health problems. And it can allow a safer resolution because you'll have mental health professionals there who are able to de-escalate situations instead of perhaps something getting escalated. We offer those. We also offer treatment, um, regular treatment. You come in, you can get assessed, you can get therapy, you can get all sorts of services. And, and these services also help people stay away from suicide crises. Interestingly enough, fifty-one percent of the people who die by suicide have never been to a mental health facility and have never been diagnosed with a mental health condition. But the problem is forty-nine percent of the people who die by suicide have, and that's only about ten percent of our population. So when you look at it, it is a mental health problem, but it's also a community problem. I know we have plenty of veterans up here in Imperial. I know that that's an area of, of, of concern. First responders, area of concern. There, there's, uh, we work with Customs and Border Patrol, area of concern. It's a very lonely job. The hours are really bad and they have access to lethal means. And so there's always a higher risk there. So we look at the areas of risk to prevent suicides and we find the areas of risk, whether that's the LGBT population, whether it's our veteran populations, whether it's our first responders who, who went through a nightmare of COVID, uh, you know, uh, wherever that area is, we end up shoring those areas up. But that won't prevent all suicides because it's hard to prevent all unbearable loss and pain. We've all probably experienced that. We're all going, thinking right now on our memories of the things that hurt us so badly. And so we know that we have to support our fellow community members. This is the first step by proclaiming a suicide prevention month. Uh, you are putting it out into your public. You're telling your community that it matters to you. And, and for those of us who have hidden, uh, uh, behind shame and stigma because we were afraid to stand up and say we hurt. This makes those people a little bit safer. Uh, I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank you for all that you do for your community in terms of all the levels of support. From everybody, I, I live in El Central. Uh, from everybody I know who lives in Imperial, they're pretty happy being here. Um, um, you must be doing something right. So, uh, thank you on behalf of behavioral health. Thank you on behalf of myself and, um, have a wonderful night and keep doing what you do.
I just want to tell you thank you for coming and, you know, this is our way of getting more information out to our public and to our constituents. It teaches my council and my staff a little bit more, you know, as regard about suicide awareness. Um, unfortunately, I had a psychiatrist and he committed suicide. And so, you know, imagine.
My close friend.
Yes, you know, and but Imperial County Behavioral Health Services was there to pick up the slack, you know, um, and their services are all, you know, they're very easy to get access to. So I encourage anybody who needs services to seek them out.
Absolutely. On September thirtieth, that Buckland Park, sorry, wrong park. We are having a national, uh, recovery month walk from nine to twelve at Buckland Park, Saturday, September thirtieth. As we know, substance use is also a risk factor in terms of suicide and, and with our fentanyl crisis and everything else, the the lethality of the means of suicide for our substance-using populations has become much more immediate and much more of a concern. So we'll be doing that. We also out at IVC on, um, Friday, October sixth, will be holding World Mental Health Day celebration. Um, and that is open to anybody in the public. It's, it's three or four classes. It's free lunch. It's music. Um, lots of information and, uh, a, a really kind of a celebration. And I know that this is a very solemn topic, but there's also a celebration of mental health because good mental health, when it's there, is worth celebrating. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Um, and also just, well, I also want to welcome up our reps for vets guys who are here also, um, just because this is such an important topic.
Uh, first off, I want to say thank you for the invitation. Um, thank you for what you're doing to recognize this month. And thank you for recognizing the work that we do in the community. I also want to thank Behavioral Health as well. Um, we've partnered with them last year to help with the stigma discrimination against mental health. Um, so my name is Brenner Brown. I'm the founder and executive director of Reps for Vets. Uh, our original mission when we started here in the valley was to help veterans in a natural way to fight against their symptoms of service through fitness and faith. Um, we started, it was August two thousand twenty. It's been three years. And we've, after the next two weeks, our last cycle graduates will officially have had a hundred and seven graduates of our training program. We've been able to save the lives of sixteen veterans calling their time of crisis. And, um, unfortunately, recently we lost a, a veteran in our program. That was currently in our, enrolled in our program and it's the first time that's happened since we've began our mission. Um, what I want to bring to the community's attention is we've been doing a lot of outreach. We've been out of the community. We've been expressing our concerns, why we do it. And, um, we really, if it wasn't for four thirteen donating in office space and if it wasn't for Duggan's Construction, um, donating for the permits and to put up the walls, um, we don't have any support. Uh, we have no financial support whatsoever. We have a skeleton crew. Uh, the way that we've gotten by for two years is selling T-shirts. And, um, we've had a lot of lip service, if you will. We've had lots of pats on the back, but we haven't had too many people actually step up to the plate. Um, uh, it was about a year and a half ago, Imperial County Board of Supervisors requested to get on their discretionary funds list and they did present us with a check of forty thousand dollars. Um, but right now our current operating costs of where we're at is to be Um, but right now, our current operating costs of where we're at is to be where we like barely need to be is twelve thousand a month, and we don't even have that coming in. So right now, we only have the availability to train six veterans at a time every twelve weeks. There's over fifty-five hundred veterans in the county. We would like to be able to train twelve at a time. And to me, that is still a low number, but it's an achievable number. Um, we've gone the grant route. We've, we're out there in the community and we just, we need help. Um, this is something that we've done out of our hearts because of the experience. I almost became a statistic myself the same week I was gonna take my life. Um, I had two veterans reach out to me. We've just been rolling ever since. And it's something that's near and dear to my heart, along even, you know, with the substance abuse issue, you know, that is something that does exacerbate these issues. And we all do know here in the valley, it's not too much to do, you know? Um, a lot of the law enforcement that that is here are also veterans. And with that being said, we've also expanded our services to not just veterans. Now we work with law enforcement and first responders. So um I volunteered to do peer counseling. And with the peer counseling, we do, some of the lives we save have been firemen. Some of them have been police officers, sheriffs. I do seminars with Border Patrol quarterly um on resilience, on how to get through tough situations. And then if it's something that I can't help them with, I'll link them with Behavioral Health to help them get the medical professionals that they need. And it's me and Josh. And we've been volunteering to do this. And it's at a point that eh we need more than that. We need uh the community's help. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone specifically. Um, but we're trying to do something really special here and we could use some special help, um if you will. And uh, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Josh, you got anything you want to say? Hook covered all bases? Cool. All right. Um, I think if I got a, and I guess something else I would want to say too. You know, if there is anyone that is out there that uh or you know anyone that is having a hard time, um, please refer them to us. We're, we make ourselves, I'm a crisis intervention chaplain, um so I'm available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And I make myself available um anytime. If I can't help them, I'll find someone that can help them. And if you guys have any referrals or references that we can help each other, please let us know. Thank you and God bless.
Yeah. If I can still you guys Brendan and Josh and Scott for a picture real quick, that'd be great.
Uh, one more, yeah. Um, so to start off, for Suicide Awareness Month, Rest for Vets, we are doing a uh a meal plate fundraiser for our organization to raise funds for our organization. Um, due to the unfortunate events, we're no longer going to use that funding for our organization. We're going to help the veteran um who passed away. We want to help with his funeral expenses. Um, so if there's anyone that would like to purchase a meal plate ticket for Marinathas um on the twenty-seventh, pick us between four to six, we have tickets here. And like I said, all the funding is going to go directly to the family to help with those funeral expenses. So, thank you.
Yeah. Moving on to item A two, um proclamation declaring the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Imperial. Um, whereas during National Ca- Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the extraordinary courage, strength and optimism of the tens of thousands of families now fighting the leading cause of death by disease for children, cancer. We remember the bright lives cut short and recommit to ending cancer as we know it, for all those we have lost and all those we can save. And whereas cancer is brutal, no matter whom it strikes, but it is particularly cruel when it affects the youngest among us. When they should be learning in school and playing outside, children with cancer are oftentimes fighting for their lives in hospitals instead. A cancer diagnosis takes a tremendous toll on their family, friends and community. Caregivers are often left struggling to deal with a flood of medical information, to make sense of treatment options and to navigate mounting medical bills, all while trying to stay hopeful and still moments of joy with their loved ones. And whereas over the past fifty years, cancer researchers have made major advances treating some of the types of pediatric cancer, but our country has so much more work to do. Whereas during National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the absolute courage of the tens of thousands of children who fight cancer in every day and all the loved ones who support them. And we recognize the medical professionals, researchers, companies, philanthropists and academic institutions who search tirelessly for early detection methods, better and safer treatments and even cures. Together, we will create a cancer-free future for our kids. Now, therefore, the city of Imperial, the city council of the city of Imperial does resolve, determine and order as follows. I am Mayor Catherine Bernworth on behalf of the city of Imperial City Council. Do hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-three as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The city encourages our residences, businesses and nonprofit organizations to help increase awareness of what we can do to spite, to support the fight against childhood cancer. And to have this resolution, um I asked my friends Nafdi and Ursula Trevino to come accept it. Um, yeah.
Oh, I'm uh, Nafthal Trevino. I'm uh not much for public speaking, but I just wanted to thank the city of Imperial and thank you guys, especially you, Katie. Uh, we've been raising money for probably about ten years before our daughter even got diagnosed or before she passed from her cancer. But uh, it means a lot. I just wanted to thank you guys.
Just wanted to be able to do our part to help raise awareness for people like your daughter. Thank you. And if I can still you guys all for a picture too.
So I apologize for the very depressing council meeting.
But, you know, those two are two things that are very near dear to my heart and I want to do whatever I can. And as mayor, making it declaring it those certain months is something that we can all do. Um, so yeah. Okay. Consent agenda. You guys better make it exciting. Um, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will then be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Moving on to item C, action items. Um, we'll start with C two. Approval of agreement between the city of Imperial and Two K Tower Services, LLC for professional services for the term of one year and the amount not to exceed the annual amount of twenty thousand dollars with Alejandro Estrada.
Um, council members, uh mayor, uh before you read the agreement uh between the city of Imperial and Two K Towers, uh in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for this fiscal year, the amount was included and always part of our um IT budget for this fiscal year. And primarily uh our services for maintenance of our towers infrastructure. And not exceed, not to exceed the twenty thousand dollars and the praise per hour is around fifty dollars, uh one hundred and fifty dollars. So I will stand for any question that you may have.
Questions from the council? I have a motion by Mendoza and a second by Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Moving on to item C three, discuss approved, disapproved purchase of budgeted pipe puller with Jackie Looper.
Ecosystem, uh what it'll enable us to do is dig two um small pits, one at the water main and one over by the meter box and pull the water lines that are air busted or got pinholes in them instead of trenching all the way across the roads and having to batch back the entire road.
My only question, when they come down for the field training, like would the, your whole crew be there or how many?
No, the the field training is set up for four people. It'll be the two guys and the distribution crew and and Isaiah. The fourth guy is yet to be determined. And those four then will teach the the rest of our staff how to operate and run it. The training is set for two days and it's onsite hands-on training.
Thank you and I'll make a motion, approve.
Second.
A motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza. Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Item C four, authorization of agreement with Arctic Glacier USA Incorporated to provide a snow scene for Christmas in a small town in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cent, seventeen cents with Tony Lopez.
Good evening, uh mayor and council. Uh Nancy Albrano, our special event coordinator will pre- presenting this item to you tonight.
Good evening, Adam Mayor, uh members of the council and everyone in it. Um, I'll be presenting as Mr. Lopez had the agenda item today. The city of Imperial is presenting the Christmas in a Small Town event on December ninth two thousand twenty-three from ten AM to three PM in downtown Imperial. The snow scene, which features a toboggan run, is a beloved element of the December Imperial Signature Event Series and will now be featured at Christmas in a Small Town. An agreement with Arctic Glacier USA Inc. provides a snow scene which Arctic Glacier provides fifty tons of snow to be blown, groomed and molded by their personnel, equipment and machinery. The snow scene is, the snow scene is not to exceed sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two do- dollars and eighteen cents. This is the budgeted amount under our special events contract services account. Our staff um recommends approval of this item and I'll stand for any questions.
Just wanted to find out, is this the standard of what we've been paying and is, or is this like something new? I know we've been doing the snow, but is this kind of a- along the same budget lines as?
It's it's a similar amount to what we've been paying um in the past. It has gone up a little bit this year. It's gone up um actually uh fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents a ton. So it's not, it's not a drastic amount.
Under we've been you?
Yes.
I'll make a motion too.
Second.
I have a motion by Mendoza and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries three zero.
Item C five, approval of the memorandum of understanding with Imperial Irrigation District regarding the undergrounding of the Dahlia Drain with uh Dennis Marita.
Um, Madam Mayor and Council, uh Dennis Springer, city manager. Uh, the the MOU memorandum of understanding that is before you involves Imperial Irrigation, a city of Imperial and Imperial Hotel acquisitions. Imperial Hotel Acquisitions is the entity that is developing the hotel and the sur- and the surrounding parcels uh at the north end uh of our city. Uh, the i- the purpose and idea of this memorandum of understanding is to allow Imperial Hotel Acquisitions to underground that portion of the Dahlia Drain that lies on their property. So the Dahlia Drain will remain an open channel uh uh to the south of this property and I presume also also to the north. Uh, but basically Imperial Hotel Acquisitions will uh bear uh all of the costs associated with the design and construction of the undergrounded facility. Uh, uh, because the district will retain the interest in the drain uh to the south and the and the drainage runs from south to north, uh as is typical uh down here. Uh, they they want to uh make sure that the uh maintenance will occur uh to the extent it is necessary uh into the future. And and in order to do that, that would involve us. So there will be a separate agreement that the city attorney will be involved in in drafting between the city of Imperial and Imperial Hotel Acquisitions and any successor to that entity uh that would provide uh uh arrangement by which they will be primarily responsible for maintenance. Uh, and uh uh and should that fail, IID would be that then be looking to us. But the agreement between the city and Imperial Hotel Acquisition will will provide uh the means by which uh any uh activity by the city uh would be uh fu- funded. Um, and uh the the uh memorandum also calls for the design of that undergrounded portion of the Dahlia Drain uh to be approved, not only by uh IID, but by the city. Uh, and o- obviously, what the concern of the city would be, would among others, would be that there are a sufficient number of uh manholes built in so that uh i- if the city were called upon to have to perform maintenance, it could do so with its existing uh equipment. So, in any case, so that's that's the agreement that's before you. Uh, the district, I'm given to understand that Imperial uh Hotel Acquisition is prepared to execute this document and that it was uh presented to the Imperial Irrigation District Board. Uh, and uh I I'm given to understand that uh they uh have also a- approved uh this agreement. So uh with that, we would recommend that uh the council uh uh approve the agreement and authorize uh the mayor's signature. I'll s- stand for any questions you might have.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza. Please vote. Motion carries three zero. Moving on to item D, reports, D one, department reports. Do any departments have anything to report on? HR.
Um, so we've been talking the last few months about uh new faces around city hall. So in the past couple of weeks, uh we have had um a couple of new hires come on board. And so we have a slideshow that we wanted to introduce our new hires to you. Okay. Um, so we have five new hires. Uh, we'll go ahead and next slide. We have um Ariel Flores, Emmanuel Gonzalez, who's our library page. Uh, you you can find him at Library Services. Then we have Ariel Flores, our organic waste monitor with community development. And we have Alyssa Farrell, the human resources analyst um with the human resources department. We have Olivia Mahorado, the executive assistant for the city manager's office. And Amy Osuna, our public records analyst with the city manager's office. As we want to welcome them and um wanted to share uh who they are. So if you see them around, please uh give them a warm welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All chief, both the chief, my chiefs right here, but Chief Lancer, you can go first.
Madam Mayor, Council, uh I just wanted to report out, I don't know if you heard, but the uh governor requested a major disaster declaration, uh presidential disaster declaration uh last week uh for Tropical Storm Hillary. Um, it's estimated um with our initial damage estimates that um Imperial County uh overall uh suffered about nine point three million in um damages. Uh, and of the, I believe there's ten counties listed in the disaster requ- declaration request of the ten counties were the second highest per capita, uh at about fifty-one dollars per capita uh in property loss. Uh, so pretty significant um numbers. Uh, so pretty significant, um, numbers, uh, I was actually, um, a little surprised. Uh, but not completely surprised because of some of the many areas throughout the entire county that were affected. Uh, so we're, uh, awaiting a decision, uh, from DC on whether or not they will, uh, go forward and, and, uh, declare. And once they do, we'll let you know.
Give her the update. Chief Crankshaw.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you on a very successful nine eleven stair climb that occurred in the city, uh. And it, uh, it, uh, had its highest record participants and sponsorship. So it seems like the program is doing very well and on their way to their quest to, uh, erect a memorial. At that, uh, at that facility, so it's, uh, it's definitely a well worth event and it was well, uh, served, so. Just want to let you know.
Thank you, Chief. Have any other department reports? Tony?
Oh, oh, real quick, before I get into, um, the department reports, I wanted to let everybody know that didn't know, already know that. Uh, Reps for Vets, uh, their, uh, Brendan and his team are always at our city events. So come and show them love, they're at four thirteen as well. I have the privilege of trying to keep up with, uh, Brendan at the gym, but I'm not there yet. So, um, you know, come show them love, it is a really noble cause, so at, if it's not at our downtown events, uh, or any of our city events, they're always. There, uh, they show a presence, so just come and support that cause, I think it's a very noble cause. Uh, and then, uh, to report October twenty-first is our first, uh, Fiesta de los Muertos event downtown Imperial. And then we have our drunkard treat, uh, on the Friday after, on the twenty-seventh at Eager Park. So come and join us and, uh, check your social media page, so we'll re-release more information as it develops.
Yeah. Onto the city manager report, Mr. Marita, do you have anything to report?
I'm just very briefly, Madam Mayor and Council, I, 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 I want to join everyone in, in welcoming the, the new folks. Uh, I, I have high hopes and expectations, uh, for all of them and look forward to, uh, being more efficient in the, in the manner in which we deliver. Uh, services, uh, and, uh, I, I think we'll, we'll, we'll be better. Uh, and so I, I really look forward to that. Uh, I, I, I'm not there this evening because I'm in Sacramento with two of your colleagues at the. Annual, uh, Cal Cities, uh, Conference in Sacramento, uh, uh, lots of, uh, good, uh, sessions. Uh, and, and so, uh, we, we will bring back, uh, information at a future, uh, meeting about what we've learned. Thank you, that's it.
How many, John Herrera, I just saw you pop on, do you have anything to report?
I, I do not, uh, just welcome to all the new employees.
Thank you. Item D three, Mayor and Council Member Reports.
Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone for the presentation on the new employees and welcome to all the new employees to our family. I don't think it's any secret here that, that one of them hurt a little bit because she was my staff member and I lost her and. I, I can guarantee we have, we have gained an, an incredible asset in the city of Imperial. And I'm certain that all the, the other four that we, we've hired will be just as, as valuable to us. Um, I did want to ask Dennis or IT or whoever, because we have, uh, proclaimed this as Suicide Prevention Month, if we can get something put on the face. The city's, uh, website, on the, maybe some hotline numbers or something for reps for vets or, uh, just any type of. Suicide prevention hotline, if we can get that on the, you know, it's some type of, uh, information about it being proclaimed as suicide prevention awareness and provide contact information for anybody. That's experiencing any issues. Okay?
Th- this is Dennis, I, I would say that's a, that, it's an excellent suggestion. And, uh, I, we, we have the folks that can ma- that can certainly make that happen.
Thank you.
No, just to welcome the new employees, and I, I do have one question for Jackie. Um, you know, the slurry seal, who, who's doing that? Um. It's going to be all over town or certain streets or?
Yeah.
That's a Jesus question.
Uh, yeah, no, then, the, oh, sorry. Yeah, the, uh, the, the program, it is not a program, uh, right now several, uh, sections of the city in, in the, in the sect, in this area. Are being, um, improved by the gas company. So basically the gas company are, are doing some perforations to, uh, replace the main line. So we met with them before starting, uh, this, uh, phase of construction. And part of the, uh, requirements we made to them is to actually, once the construction is done. Applies this lower seal. Because it's not the, it's going to make them way stronger, but once their construction is done. The, uh, the actual asphalt is going to be weakened. So this little seal is going to preserve the, the road and give it probably two, three years of life. So in, actually, and, and this is something I have in discussing with, uh, Director Mora. Um, it's a good pilot program for us, we are going to follow up on how these. Uh, improvements are working to actually spread out in other areas of the city. We have obviously, um, additional projects for restoration, restoration is way more expensive, obviously. Uh, the benefit is better, but right now we have the atom road. That is going to be improved, I mean, significant improvements, but the other section of the city can, can be, uh, improved. Uh, with this kind of, uh, uh, technology. Right, thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this is Dennis, if I can, if I can just add, what, you know, one of the, one of the, uh, benefits of, of, of coming to. Functions like this annual conference is that I had an opportunity to have a conversation today with Deborah McGary. Who I think you all know as being, uh, our representative with the gas company. Uh, she is now, uh, uh, a councilperson in, in La Quinta. So she, she can see these issues from, uh, I think, uh, uh, our, our side of the dais, if you will. Uh, and, and she indicates that they, 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 uh, contract with outside folks to do, uh, the work. That, and that the quality of the work is very important to them. And so she emphasized that if you should see anything, uh, that does not, uh, uh, rise to the level that we expect. Uh, in terms of what they leave behind after they do their work, that we should certainly let her know. Uh, and so, uh, the, the, the slurry as Jesus, uh, indicated is, is what they. Chose to do in those areas where they had, have been, uh, doing work. Uh, and, and so if you should see anything, please, please feel free to let me know and I'll make sure that the gas company gets word that, uh, that, that. Uh, there's a tension that needs to be given to, uh, uh, whatever it might be.
Thank you. Um, I report, I have nothing to report, but again, welcome all the new staff, um. Brendan, are you stretching or do you have a comment? Yes.
Quick, I know everyone's ready to go, this is the Lord put in my heart, um, part of what I do is I, I advocate for people that can't really speak for themselves. And earlier when I said that, uh, we've opened our peer, peer support counseling to firemen, first responders, police officers. Um, as combat veterans, uh, you know, I've never been a fireman, I've never been a police officer. Um, but I have been in situations where I've had to be in high stress situations, I've had to see things that I'll never forget. And I think it's very, um, I don't know if the community, they say, you know, they thank these guys for their service, but I don't think if they, they really understand what these guys see and what they go through. Um, I've been speaking to multiple firemen from different fire departments, um, there. The, there is behavioral health, but there's been a lot of studies showing that there's more, um, benefit in an actual peer support than a subject matter expert. Speak to somebody that's actually seen it, gone through it and have gone through it in a healthy way. Opposed to an individual that's never seen it, never done it, telling you what to do, um. A lot of these departments. Have no, th- there's no chaplain, they don't actually have a chaplain, they don't have a person to go to. Um, from Raleigh to Holtville, El Centro, I'm speaking for the entire county, I've had these guys come up to me saying like. You know, they could go to the behavioral health, but when it comes to like a chaplain, like they don't have anybody. And you know, and my job as a chaplain is I don't have an agenda, you know, I'm here to meet people where they're at, whether it's secular or, or non-secular. And, um, I really feel the, in some way, shape or form, there needs to be more attention brought to what these guys actually see and go through. Because it's for them, it's part of the job and no one's going to tell their leader or their peer. That they can't handle it because they want to be there for their guys, but at the end of the day, they need to have a healthy outlet to decompress and get that stuff out. Because that's where the alcohol comes in, that's where, um, you're either going to be good at your job and bad at home or good at home and bad at your job. You know, it's, the stress is going to go somewhere, so I just want to bring that to the attention of the community and speak for those that. Can't really speak for themselves, and if there's any way Reps for Vets can get involved to help that and alleviate that stress, we would like to help.
Do that.
Yep.
Can I add to that quickly? Just, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll, speaking from my heart, as a dispatcher, police dispatcher for twenty years. I think maybe that's a component you may want to include or, or consider. Because yes, the, the, the people on the streets do experience a lot, but the people who are behind a counter that can't. Excuse, can't see what's going on and they only know the stress and the danger of what's going on, they experience it too.
Absolutely, I can imagine just being in those circumstances, but now you're bringing that perspective, I could definitely see that being a hard thing to, to, you still keep that in, so. I understand that, and any way we could help out, we would like to on, on the peer, peer perspective, so.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I, this is for me, you know, I'm a huge advocate for mental health, um. You know, and to break the stigma and everything that it's okay to not be okay and it's okay to reach out for help, I mean, statistics tell me. That one of our, somebody in our departments, you know, could become a statistic and that's something I want to do to prevent and something that I want to advocate. As your mayor and your council member to make sure that everybody within the city of Imperial has the access to the resources that they need. Um, just, I can think of way too many people that I have loved that have committed suicide and. It's, we need to help people, so by breaking the stigma, bringing awareness and making sure everybody has it, so. And with that, I will end, adjourn the city, regular city council meeting at eight oh two PM. Until our next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on Wednesday, October fourth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM.